To reprise what we learned about on chapter fifteen, right? So I don't forget the thing. Summarize it. All right, chapter fifteen, we learned about innate immunity, right? And we learned that in innate immunity, when you see a PAMP. Pathogen associated molecular pattern, right? When you see a PAMP, that's what, you know, gets you excited to go to fight, right? Start doing your work, alright. Um, they, we learned about the white blood cells, all of them, literally. So white blood cells are also known as leukocytes. And we even divided it up, right? If you do them on a stain and you'll see some that have no granules. I wish I put none over here. So we would call them a granulo sites because they're lacking. We should put a grand, and then the other group did have granules. So let's put grand and these are the. Okay, really granulo sites. Alright. That chapter, we can divide these up. I'm going to go ahead onto the left one first because that didn't, wasn't really covered as much in the chapter. But we divided this into two kinds of groups. We had the um, monocytes. Group, those can go into tissues and become macrophages. This is how we abbreviate them in immunology typically. And. And you can also have dendritic cells, right? Okay, so that was one. The other group of a granulo sites, we had the. Lympho sites, right? Okay, so our lympho sites, you can divide those into the B and the T cells. Obviously, this chapter is going to focus on that. Alright, the granulo site groups that do have the granules, when you stand them, you see little granules. That's really literally all that's about. Uh, we have the following. We have. Neutrophils. Uh, eosinophils. And. Phasophils. As far as the granulo sites go, those are the ones I want you to focus your attention on. Because I'll have those that I talk about on the test. I do know and I am aware there is a fourth one, it is on the study sheet. That fourth one is the mast cell. Okay, the neutrophil, it does a lot of. Phagocytosis, right? It's, it's the big guy for that one. And it is the most common white blood cell. In your blood typically. Eosinophils, those are associated with parasitic. Uh, basophils, inflammation. And then mast cells, we are going to associate mostly with allergies. Okay. We learned about phagocytosis. Um, I'm not going to go through the steps of all of that, but we were, we kind of had an idea of how that works. We know that it eat a thing up, we combine it with the bag of toxins and it just dissolves that down. And, you know, and it's gone, okay? Um, so anything that is able to do phagocytosis will be working that way. Any phagocytes, so the phagocytes are going to be. The neutrophils will have the monocytes count, the amphages, macrophages. Uh, and then dendritic cells and, and the mast cell. But again, I'm not really going to talk about it, okay? So the top four are the ones that we really want to care about. Neutrophils, when they talk about breaking down these guys and, and um, dissolving everything in their little bags. These guys, the phagolyseomes, these guys just poop them out, poop out what's left over and just move on. They excrete the waste and just move on. Remember that because we're going to come back to how the macrophages and dendritic cells don't do that. Alright, so that's the gist of what we went over, really, really basic breakdown of innate setup. Any questions about that? Alright, that's our setup. Alright, for chapter sixteen, this is going to be adaptive acquired or specific immunity. All of these things referring to the fact that we are going to react to specific things. I just said on that slide that I was just talking about. That in innate immunity, we recognize PAMPs, right? Just basic patterns that say a bad guy is here, whether that's a potato glycan or whatever. Um, but they aren't specific to that organism. These guys are going to get specific, okay? So innate, we react to a PAMP. Over here in adaptive, we react to antigens. Um, immunocompetence is a term referring to the ability of your body to react with the foreign substances. So your ability to, um, if your body could potentially react to, you know, eight billion different things. Maybe yours would be more prolific than mine, I don't know, but that's referring to immunocompetence. Or probably to react to any possible antigen. Um, come on dude, this, this uh. Keyboard is really absolutely trash. Right, so we know about antigens, we know what they are, we have another term for them. Immunogens that I'm just pretty much never going to use. Antigens is anything that can provoke an immune response. And even specifically this kind of immune response, alright? Um, they are usually going to be proteins of some kind, they can have sugars associated with them. That's usually just what they see, honestly. And so no wonder that that's what they are best at responding to. Um, but yeah, they could be anything, as long as they can bind with it, it could be anything. I keep trying to click the button like that's going to work. Uh, we've just mentioned this, PAMPs really, really general to see just that there's a bad guy there and verify that there is a bad guy. Whereas antigens or immunogens, whichever way you want to look at it, are very specific. Uh, and like I keep saying, specific, that hit that the slide always comes right after I have to say it. But anyways, specificity, I'm going to say specific a lot in this lecture, right? Well, we get it, this isn't general anymore, we want to, we want to focus in on this bad guy. Um, luckily, when we're doing this, we also generate memory. Our memory comes in kind of this form of uh, where we're activating everybody else. Some of those guys just stand aside to be memory cells. And it's going to work out pretty well for us because they live somewhere for a very, very long time. You can get your tetanus shot about every ten years and probably if you went past ten years and you saw. The tetanus again, you'd probably still be protected, they just want to keep you safe, right? But ten years, we got cells floating around for ten years after you got your shot, still ready to go by tetanus. Alright. This isn't mine, alright. Uh, this is the basic layout of the whole story of a lymphocyte. We have their development, we've mentioned previously that this is going to be in our bone marrow. Uh, we'll go over it in a moment, but um, once we see the antigen that we match with. Then we can be activated and go out and do the big fight. And when that happens, when we are activated and we see that antigen out in the field, let's say. Then uh, B cells will make antibodies and T cells are involved in cell mediated immunity. That's a term to be familiar with, okay? You have choices here in adaptive immunity, antibodies or cell mediated. Okay, cool, it worked that time, alright. Uh, the, this is how it plays out, you have your stem cell in the bone marrow. Um, and it can, if you have a B cell that it's turning into, it just chills in the bone marrow until it's ready and done. And then it goes and floats around in your lymph and it hangs out in lymph tissue like the lymph node in the spleen. That's all it does, not a very exciting story. However, you look at the story of the T cell, they're not not exciting either, but really you start at the bone marrow. And then you move to the thymus and mature there and then you go do your job out and hang out floating around in the bloodstream in the lymph or whatever. Oh geez, why are you this way? Like it really is, I don't know what's going on with those things. Okay, so here is the overview with a whole bunch of arrows and crap that's just suddenly going to get thrown in your face, right? The blue guy in this image. Up in the upper left, that is our antigen. So our fidget spinner, for example, right? That's what we were dealing with last time, let's just go with it again, right? Okay, so that's our antigen, our fidget spinner. And what happens is our, our cell that's going out to do the fighting comes along and recognizes a PAMP, right? Just say whatever general thing, bad guy is here, going to eat it up, going to break it down. And now the parts, it's going to take some of those parts, like we've mentioned previously, it's going to go and say, anybody recognize this part? Okay, so they react to a PAMP. Uh, broke down the bad guy and now taking parts of it to see if there's anybody, any, you know, tanks or groups that can come out here and fight, right? So it's going to do that on this special marker on itself. So it took that antigen from outside of itself, it wasn't already in there. The reason I bring that up is if you have a virus, that's already in your cells, right? For the most part, so that's important to remember too. But we picked this up from outside, it's easy to imagine this, uh, broke it down. And now we're going to look to see if there's anybody that can interact with this. Turns out, yes, there is, we found a, a T cell. That can see this, so that antigen presenting cell broke the bad guy down, has this, says, anybody see this? Right, the guy that sees it, let's say it's Mark, then uh, will be like, oh yeah, yeah, I'm the one, the one. There are not many, there is one cell. Okay, so only the Mark cell comes and says, yes, that's the one I can interact with because y'all can't. Y'all just waiting for your own thing, Mark's like, I've been waiting my whole life for this and it's true. That's how it works with these cells, okay? And they're all just waiting. So anyways, the T cell, it's going to get activated here. Um, it interacts with each other, they speak to each other with their cytokines, right? Those chemicals that are involved in all of these things. Um, and now uh, we can also show this to the other kind of T cells, there's two kinds. I'll break those down later, but basically, we actually do one of them, that first one that we interact with, the Mark one. He can now go out and wake up the other T cell as well as the B cells. They, that one that we woke up first, the Mark one, that one is our captain. And the B cell bombers and the T cell fighter tanks, they can't do anything without the go ahead from the captain. Okay, so that's it, there. So the captain's been activated and it's going around waking everybody up. First down this B cell line, it's getting activated. And uh, it turns into a couple of things. Anytime most of these guys are activated, just keep in mind, anytime pretty much any of them are activated, we get a memory. And a regulator. That's happening pretty much all the time, it's great. That's all the story that you really need to know about them. Then we have out here our effector cells. So that means the cell that's really doing the job of the B cell, what we expect, right? So that's spelled like this. Anyways, in this case with B cells, once they're activated, their effector version that they change into is called a plasma cell. I know we talked about plasma in the last chapter, this is not that, okay? Plasma is like, you know, liquids of proteins and all that, the liquid part of your blood. This, I don't know why it's called that, I guess because it's in your plasma, I have no idea. But these are plasma cells, they're actual cells and they're going to just crank out antibody, that is all they do. Okay, that's literally it. They're just going to make antibody and antibody and antibody. And so they get this look to them, you see these little like, they even drew it on, on here. These lines, those lines are the endoplasmic reticulum. We already know that endoplasmic reticulum is where we make protein. So they're making so much fricking antibody, which is a protein, but that's pretty much all they are, is endoplasmic reticulum. So that's pretty crazy. So we got that going, cool, that's the B cell story. Um, so this, the captain, which who we call the helper. T cell and was able to activate our B cell and help activate our cytotoxic T cell, the other one, this is our tank, okay? Uh, he got signals to go ahead because this guy is hella dangerous, okay? This guy, what does the cytotoxic T cell, obviously the name sounds pretty intimidating, cytotoxic. Um, cyto being the cell and toxic being what it sounds like, toxic. It literally goes around killing your cells, your infected cells. This reaction is so tough, so big and so nasty. That if it goes wrong, it can kick your newly donated kidney straight out of your body. That is the reaction that does that. Only that, ever had, uh, also ever had poison ivy? That's only this. So cytotoxic T cell, it's pretty nasty, bring it up because that's why we need the helper cell, the, the Mark cell. That uh, that cell has come around and say, yes, okay, this is this, you're ready, right? And the, the tank guy is like, yeah, yeah, okay, he can't just run off and go start killing things really newly. He has to match up all the markers and say, I need to see your passport first and that sort of stuff before we go out and fight. So that has to happen or else we're just going to have just a mess. Notice that we also have memory cells and crap like that here. Yeah, but when you see the rash itself, that is because, yes, that's because your tank cells, your cytotoxic cells. Are attacking your cells that incorporated with the oils from the leaves. And sees them as they need to react to its bad guy stuff. It's literally just killing your cells up on your skin. Cool. Alright, alright, then we have, uh, just more detail over here. This is our antibody secretion from our B cells, you see how it looks like snowflakes? We'll get into that more later and it'll enter the bloodstream and get circulated throughout the body to go to its job the best way it can. What is this job? Don't worry, we'll talk about it. Um, so yeah, all of these guys will eventually from our T cells have our helpers, our regulatory's and our cytotoxics and we also have memories. So this one has four things going on, whereas the Bs had just three. They just had memory regulator and plasma. But that's because we need two T, kinds of T cells here, we need somebody to write, to be the helper to activate and somebody do the fighting. Uh, so I'm talking about these antigen presenting cells that are going around, uh, what they did the PAMP thing, they ate up the bad guy, they digested it, they got the antigen. They're holding it out, calling out to see who recognizes this fidget spinner. Who, you know, anybody notice this, anybody, you know, looking for this? Um, the thing that they're doing that with, the holding it out molecule, that receptor is called the MHC receptor. Okay, now this one is uh, going to be important because we have two different kinds that you need to worry about. Um, so this MHC, first of all, before we move on too far, it'll be the next slide, let's just go on to that. Um, it's called the major histocompatibility complex. Interesting that we call it histocompatibility, right? Histose is like tissue, like the tissue of your body, for example, and being compatible. So I've already told you guys that I worked in the transplant immunology lab at Baptist. And um, when we would test people for their compatibility with organs before they would receive them. Uh, we uh, would test for this. And we called ourselves the HLA lab because what we tested for was HLA. And we're going into how it works here in a moment, but that's the only thing that transplant, you know, scientists are going to test for. They don't look at anything else to match you with, only genes associated with MHC. That's how important these are. This is all about presenting antigen. Out and staying on the right molecule and saying, here is the fidget spinner. And our other cells reacting to it, being able to say, yes, I see this fidget spinner and we're communicating correctly. That's important, alright, let's see, let's move on. Because I want to talk about this, come on, alright, class one. Go, go figure, we're going to have classes multiple and I told you there's two, so there's class one and there's class two, it's not crazy. Class one and class two. Um, I don't know, let's start with class two. Class two, class two, we'll come back to the other one, you're going out. And you're a, a phagocyte, you're going out and you're eating up these guys that have PAMPs on them, you verify that it's a PAMP. It's a bad guy, yes, I eat it and I break it down. You take the parts of the bad guy, you present the antigens out on your MHC molecule, we already said that's your, you know, displaying molecule. If you got it from outside of your cell, like you would see with bacteria outside of the cell, if you got it from outside, it's presented on MHC two. I'm really bad about losing things here, okay, so. Outside equals MHC two. If you got it from inside of the cell. Then that's going to be MHC one. And this is how I remember it as well, because MHC one, and it can be the number one, it doesn't have to be the Roman numeral. But the, I draw it with the Roman numeral on purpose because that looks like an I to me on MHC one, an I for inside. That's how I remember it. So outside, MHC two, inside, MHC one, okay? Remember stuff coming from inside, like viruses and that sort of thing? If it's come from outside, bacteria usually aren't inside of your cell, sometimes they'd get there. But when they're outside of the cell, we take them in as phagocytes, right? So if something's outside of the cell and you have to take it in and break it down in order to deal with this, you have to be a phagocyte. Right, because they're the only ones that do the taking in and breaking down thing. So only phagocytes have the machinery to do this. Remember how I told you guys that neutrophils just go around breaking stuff down and then pooping out whatever they had and just mindlessly moving on? Right, they're not presenting anything when they find it, they're just pooping it out. Macrophages can come and break it down or they can come pick up the mess that the neutrophil has left behind. And present them on MHC two, right? They got it from outside, so it goes on the MHC two. And they'll take it in their special MHC two presenting thing and do exactly what I've been telling you the whole time. Yeah, from outside, so only, so MHC two will only uh, be associated with displaying on antigen presenting cells. There's only three kinds of cells you have to worry about really with this, okay? And that is our antigen presenting cells, macrophages. Dendritic cells, which we already knew these were, we, these were phagocytes, right? So no big surprise here, but they're also able to present. Um, and then another one that we have is going to be a big surprise, which is the B cell. So this is sort of an innate activity, right? Breaking things down and presenting that, that's sort of non-specific. But B cells can do it, why would they be able to do it? Why should they be able to do it? Because they are hanging out in your lymph nodes, they stay there, that's where they live. So here's what happens, you are, you drop your kayak on your toe, I don't know, you step on a nail. That's better example, and there's bacteria that gets in your body, yeah? And neutrophils come in and they start breaking it down, they leave their trash everywhere. And um, and whatever, that trash, if the macrophages aren't picking it up, it will move with all of those cells and other things. From that fluid in that area that had rushed in, created the tumor effect, right? That fluid comes back in, but it doesn't go back into the bloodstream, does it? It goes back into the lymph, this is where that comes in. You may have got there via blood, but when you come out from an inflammatory response, you're entering the lymphatic system. So you move through the lymphatic system before you rejoin the bloodstream. This is excellent news because we've got hella lymph nodes lined up all the way. Hella lymph nodes that are going to filter through every drop of that lymph. That moves through your lymphatic system, as long as y'all move it, right? You got to move with the muscle movement. So we're pumping it through those lymph nodes that are heavy with some B cells. And the B cells are sitting there. Um, they're like, like Mark's twin, basically, but B cell version. Uh, so B cell Mark is just hanging out, you know, playing cards or whatever, and finally this filters through. Fidget spinner comes filtering through, just on its own, nobody's presenting it, nothing, it migrated in with the fluid into the lymphatic system. We're filtering through, um, B cell Mark comes and says, oh yeah, 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 I know you. Picks it up and then goes and looks for a T cell to have, to be like this. It goes and looks for its twin, basically, the T cell version. B cell Mark looks for T cell Mark and says, hey man, I got this thing, can you activate me please so we can get this going? And he, of course, is going to say, oh yeah, we can provide you to see your passport first because that's how it always goes. Because you can't go nuts before we have that, they communicate, they match up, everything's good, we activate the B cell, it can make an antibody. And all that, and it can cross activate the T cell as well. So good, so that's great that the B cell can do this and cover that while the macrophages and the dendritics are out in the tissues where they belong. Okay. Uh, I want to miss anything for the eye. Yes, this one, this thing. Um, yeah, so that, that's great. So our phagocytes that are capable of presenting our macrophages and dendritic cells in our B cells. That can start activating the T cells. They have MHC two, nobody else needs it, nobody else has MHC two. So only those guys have that marker on them and nobody else could deal with it that way. So that's the outside stuff, the phagocytes have to deal with that, the antigen presenting cells. And H one genes, you see, all nucleated cells are going to have MHC one. Because this is the crap that comes from inside of your cell. You have viral infections, you can get virus to infect pretty much any cell in your entire body, depending on the virus, right? So every cell in your body has to be armed with a way to call for help. That's the MHC one gene. So MHC one, um, you just always have it and it's just your ability to, uh, it's like a, the walkie talkie to call for help. Yeah, so that's basically what that is, um. So I'm just thinking more analogies with poor Mark up here, so it's just, but anyways. Um, so yeah, uh, everybody has it, all nucleated cells. Because they're the ones that are in danger, the ones that with the nucleus, they had their own genes and that's the part of the problem. It can also interact with cancer, it can be associated with cancer. If your cells realize that something's going wrong, things aren't dividing or being made the way that they're supposed to because your genes are screwed up from cancer. That's what causes cancer. Then they'll do the same thing with evidence from that. So this is important for cancer too. So cancer and uh, viruses that you've been infected with are coming from inside of your cell. Uh, those are going to get presented on their parts as they're building inside of your cell, get presented on MHC one and call out for help. The call for help with the MHC one ends in not such a nice way, right? We'll get to it. But that's what it is. Alright, so we talk about, I am antigen presenting cell on my MHC two, that I picked up my antigen. And I'm presenting it from outside of the cell and I'm saying, does anybody recognize this? Okay, uh, T cell Mark comes to interact with my MHC two, holding the antigen. And it's got to match up with, they'd match the same thing, but they're not the same thing. So this is on MHC two and what T cell Mark is going to interact with this with, it's called the T cell receptor. Not fancy, but that's what it is. It interacts specifically with what I'm displaying on MHC two. MHC two can display fricking anything, it's not specific to an antigen. For what it's holding out, when it sees that T cell receptor on the right, that is going to be a very specific interaction. So this isn't just looking for, you're holding a thing out and I recognize you. This is you're holding the exact thing out that I interact with, that's what we're looking for here. So very specific interaction on that side, so on the T cell or B cell side, they're the ones with the specificity. So that's going to come in, um, and once we know we're getting this whole thing going, B cells and T cells needs to be able to interact with this. I hate to break it to you, but when you have a viral infection, it's not just inside your cells, right? There are some that are outside the cells too. So you are, of course, in any immune reaction, going to have both activated. But it tends to lean one way or the other, based on what you're going to see more. So whatever, it doesn't really matter that much, but uh, these receptors on the surface, super, super specific for fidget spinner. And MHC just picks up a thing and says, can you come look at this and see if you need this? So MHC two, I found this, can, are, does anybody recognize it? Uh, T cell Mark comes along with his T cell receptor, it matches up exactly. And we're getting all the signals saying that everything's matching up right. We do this with these stupid things on the side, okay, that's all that's about. Um, but yeah, the similar sort of thing can happen with the B cell receptor on the outside. It looks an awful lot like what I used to draw you guys about the antibodies for Eliza, yeah? Because it basically is. No worries, we're going to talk about that too. So though, that's the setup, the specific receptors on the outside, interacting with the specific antigen being held by the. General MHC one or two, depending, right? Right. Alright, so, um. Something I want to come up with this, I don't really need to go into too much detail, we already kind of talked about this. We already know it's macrophages, dendritic and B cells, we already talked about, about how that works. We're talking about clones of T cells and B cells, what I'm saying is, once. What I'm saying is, once this antigen on the MHC two from the antigen presenting cell comes and finds T cell Mark and we interact and T cell Mark is now activated. He was waiting, lying in wait, waiting his whole life as, uh, this captain. Now he's gonna go to war. Right? Finally, we're going to war. Once that happens, T cell Mark, he's going to replicate himself, clone himself, make just a bunch of himself. And that's what happens first. So this is what we're talking about with creating our clones. But when we're doing this whole event, if I am holding up fidget spinner, like I mentioned earlier, and Mark says, I see this and you guys didn't, we've agreed on that, right? You recognize something else. You recognize stapler or pen or whatever it is, right? Um, each of you has your own thing. And that's exactly what I mean. Each T cell will have its own thing. Each B cell will have its own thing that it worries about. So Mark worries about fidget spinner. Okay? Um, and that's important so that we're not activating everybody in the whole room. We're only activating Mark. He's the only one getting called out. So we don't all get up and grab our guns and go to war. Only Mark, he's the only one called. Okay? Uh, that's has a lot to do with, um, how we keep the immune system in check. Alright, the main types of T cells, we already introduced that concept, the helper cell. That's like the captain driving everything along, the cytotoxic T cell below it. Uh, that's gonna go around killing things. And then we have the regulatory T cells keeping everything in check. All you need to know about any of the regulatory cells is that they're just trying to keep things in check. You are responding when you're supposed to and you're not overreacting to things. That's all they're doing. They're always circulating around. B cells are kind of always gonna be in the lymph nodes. Um, cool. And, uh, when they differentiate into plasma cells that make antibody, they're basically all the same. Alright, now moving on to this concept of, of course, those rando things that were on the outside of the cell that I said that have to co react to get everything right. Some of those markers, I don't need you to care at all about CD three FYI. Nor because you do need to worry about though, CD four and CD eight. If you have, if you are a T helper cell, like Mark was when we came to interact with him and he's gonna go, uh, be the captain and take care of everything, make sure it's all getting activated, right? If you're helper, you have CD four on your surface. If you are going out there in your tank to kill, you are CD eight. Again, my silly way of remembering this. H for helper, the H looks to be more like a four than it does an eight. I don't know. It has a crossbar, right? A four and an H. That's how I remember, that's how I've learned it anyways. Um, so you start out as a precursor cell as just CD four. You know, you're gonna be a helper cell. But there's more to it than that. Why wouldn't there be? So before we go on with this, um, we have all this diversity between all of the T cells and the B cells. We have this nuts ability to react to all of these sorts of things that you could possibly be exposed to. Eight point six billion possibilities that your body can, it'd be, you know, reacting to. You have twenty thousand genes in your body. That doesn't add up. I'll tell you how, I'll tell you how it works. We already talked about how this is. Um, this is kind of how. So you can take genes that are associated with how you're gonna interact with this antigen and basically just mix and match them when you're making your cells early on. So that already, we're mixing matching your genes up, um, to create all this variability. That's helpful on its own. And in addition to that, you can add or subtract nucleotides randomly, however you see fit. So that adds even more variability, which is also crazy. This is how your body creates all of the different people that are in the room. But they're all gonna respond to something different. In the case, Mark fidget spinner, right? That's how that's created. If that isn't some of the coolest stuff that you've ever heard that your body can do, that's crazy, right? If you haven't watched the video that I posted online, this is what it's talking about is, is this part of it. It gets into more detail, but it explains how that works. It's fascinating. If you're not fascinated by it, we're not friends anymore. Okay? So, so, um, anyways, this is our antibody shape. We know about antibodies. We've kind of seen them already, right? In our Eliza stuff. So this is not news. We have our little Y shape. In the middle of the Y, you got this thing that is like, uh, one piece that's really long and another piece that's really long, right next to each other. And yeah, they're bound together, but that's not that big of a deal right now. These bigger pieces, these are the heavy chains. And on the outside, we have these little pieces added on, I guess, to just balance it out. But it just actually gives it more variety and, and stuff like that. But these are called the light. That makes sense. Big is heavy and small is light. On the ends of the light chain where all those colors are on this antibody, the, that's our variable region, okay? This whole top part of this is gonna be our variable region. That's where everything is that differentiates between, uh, you know, fidget spinner and pen and whatever. All of that is decided in that colorful area. The rest. That's fidget spinner again, right? Y'all gotta be kidding me with this. Okay? It's not a day for me thinking that it is a tornado siren. Yeah, that's what I'm saying is like, that's why I was like, that better not be tornado watch. It better actually be a, like, that better not be a tornado warning. But we already said this, right? Who's, what is gonna knock this down? I don't think that F five could even knock this fricking building down. Unfortunately, because I really like a new science building. But I think we could all agree, we could use a new science building. This place is rundown. Um, so whatever, here's our antibody, light chain and, um, the top of the heavy chain out there. That's where our variability is, where we can decide what we can react to with all of this variety. The bottom part though, why do we need that? That's where the function of the antibody. So we know it's important that you recognize your antigen. But what do you do after that? The bottom part, the FC region, we'll get to FC part with the constant region. That constant region is what determines how you're gonna do your job and what you're gonna do and where and all of that. So constant region, if you're doing, um, you know, a, a general kind of antibody job, that's not gonna change a whole, whole lot between any given antibodies. I mean, what I'm saying is that B cell, um, Mark's constant region on his antibodies are gonna look just like B cell Lauren's constant region on her antibodies. They're pretty much the same. Make sense? Alright, uh, antigen binding sites in those variable regions, because that's where all the variety is. The constant region it's saying doesn't really vary greatly. That's where our function's gonna come from. So we know we have all this variety that we're gonna have to make early on in our literal, like, development in the womb. This is all gonna have to happen very early on in your existence. So, um, we have to get prepared and ready for all of this. And you've got variety, not just in your antibodies, but in your T cell receptors just as much. Cause they have to be, have variety to antigen too. So how, uh, what do we do to deal with all of this? Like, that's a lot of cells and variety and everything to deal with. Certainly, if you're mixing and matching random genes, like all over the place, hoping for variety, some of them are gonna react with your own stuff. So that's the self ones. Yeah, we're anti-self. Well, we gotta get rid of that. That happens very early on. In your bone marrow and the stem cells themselves, any of them that would react to self, we kill them. So they can't go on. So what's left? So we got rid of all the people, um, that would have killed everybody else in the room. We killed them first. Kicked them out, okay? And now it's all us and we react to fidget spinners. We react to pens and things like this that you should. And that's our repertoire of cells. And there's only one of each of us. Um, and the antigen comes along like we've been talking about on its appropriate MHC. And you come and interact with it. And now we will clone you and only you. Not everybody in the room, but just you that recognizes your antigen. You one little lonely cell waiting for this. Alright, so you have to have tolerance, quote unquote, to yourself. That just means that you don't have a whole bunch of stuff that will be left over that does react against you. It's not a perfect system. Sometimes things slip through the cracks. That can lead to autoimmune disease if that gets stimulated later. Potentially. Our antigens, we know that provokes the immune response. That's all we don't care about the rest of that. Um, so you have to see something as foreign, but you have to be able to react to it too. So things that prefers to react to, as far as antigens that our body prefers. We like protein or protein with carbohydrates or carbohydrates. We like bigger molecules. More to kind of interact with. Small ones, it can get very difficult with certain kinds of chemicals that you're made of. It can get tricky. We prefer the larger things that are basically, are gonna be, uh, folded up with lots of shape to just get real hands on with, right? Um, this stuff down here is so the polypeptide and tri saccharide, these guys are so just generic. There's not a lot of variety there for us to really interact with, right? So if you had polypeptide lined up A and then polypeptide lined up B, how do you tell the difference? And that is the problem. So we like a lot of variety. Fold it up, give it shape, give it unique characteristics. That's what we want. We react very well to those things. If it doesn't react well to it, that doesn't mean we can't make antibody. It just might not be as effective as other antibodies. Let me show you. Uh, tetanus. Now let's go back to what we said about, uh, measles. Measles vaccine. And I bring in somebody that has measles and rub them all over you guys. And you guys don't get measles. Do you think the virus got into your body? Yeah, it got into your body. Okay? But your vaccine gave such a great response that you see nothing. You feel nothing. And this happens all the time. You wouldn't even know, because it's so effective, that effective. How, uh, however, COVID vaccine. COVID vaccine, it's not that it's not effective necessarily, but it doesn't stop the disease completely. It probably was a less successful antigen, but it's what we had to work with. So that's what we got. It doesn't stop the disease, but it has saved lives. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, I'm sure I've mentioned it before, people were dying in the beginning of COVID and healthy people were dying. People forget it. There was a reason why we had people standing six feet apart with masks and told not to go out if you can help it. Cause people who are healthy were dying and the healthcare workers treating them were dying. Now we get our vaccines, we go out and we get a cold. And now you get to survive. And it might be around for a long time. We might not be able to get rid of it. But it's helping people survive and live our lives again. So that's, that's still a success, but still wish it was a better antigen, right? Wish it was more like measles or tetanus or something. That's what this stuff about. Alright, sometimes what happens is the way that your thing interacts with the antigen, your T cell receptor or your antibody comes along. And yeah, it's gonna see fidget spinner, but it's not gonna hold the whole fidget spinner. It's going to react to just part of it. And it says, this is, this is the good stuff right here. That part it interacts with is called the epitope. It's the part of the antigen that you're specifically interacting with, right? Haptins are whenever you have, um, an antigen that's too small to interact with. I have nothing small up here. I would use that, but it's too small to get a good grip on. You just can't do it. Okay? So it's a problem because you might still wanna have antibodies against those things. If we can make the antibodies, those antibodies can hang on tighter. Once they're made, the receptors are a little bit iffy. So if we can get it going, it might still protect us. But how do we get it to work? How do we get you to have a response? We pop it in with something else to give it more substantial size. Um, if we're just adding something on to make it work, that's a carrier. You can also add on other haptins that are also small and put them together. Ever heard of the T DAP vaccine? Tetanus, Diptheria, Cortosis. They're all toxoids. They're all haptins. And you're just vaccinating against the toxin. You're not vaccinating against the bacteria. We'll stop, right? So here's a picture of it. Here's a mouse and, uh, we're gonna poke it with, uh, sharp needle. And if we just put happen in, it can't react and it's gonna die from tetanus. And then if we add something to it to help it react, we can create antibodies. Those antibodies, when they see the smaller thing, they're gonna be stronger so they can react with it better. The receptor isn't really at first. Alright, alloantigens are any antigens that your body would react to and see as foreign, just like any other antigen. But it's on the surface of other people's cells. So if I get your kidney and I reject it, I'm reacting to your alloantigens. Okay, that's what we check for whenever we're looking for compatibility. We're checking to see that the genetics showing those markers indicate that your markers are gonna be, uh, good to go with my immune cells. We do genetic testing all the way wherever we can. We take antibody samples from you while you're waiting to get your kidney. We store them up. We keep the profile of your entire history of all of your antibody profiles and, um, everything. So that when somebody does fly in on lifeflight, that we can, um, decide whether that organ usually flies in on lifeflight, um, that we can decide quickly. We have all the information we need. We just need to run that one test to prove that it actually is doing what we think it's gonna do. So you get your kidney and hopefully don't reject it. But you still reject it because there's still other factors involved, right? We can't predict everything, unfortunately. A friend of mine was like that. She tested completely safe. I tested her actually. I didn't ever tell her that, but I was the one who was testing her. Everything was clear. Everything was good. She got her kidney and she rejected it. There's no sign that she should have, but it happens. The right, you know, markers just weren't activated and then they did get activated and it sucked. We have super antigens as well, but alloantigens, haptins that are tiny. We have alloantigens from people and we have super antigens that are too much stimulation. These are our bacterial toxins. Okay, they are gonna stimulate your T cells so, 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 so much that it goes nutso. The tanks that have been waiting for so long to go fight this fight, they are not waiting for the captain to tell them to go. They're reading, getting all of these cytokines, these messages telling them, go, go, go. Don't went for the captain. Go, 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 go. And so when they see the thing, they go without the captain telling them it's okay. And this is a cytokine storm. That's the messages coming in. Um, or those are proteins that tell cells what to do and immune responses. Um, and then we have overactive T cells doing whatever they're doing. And they can also, uh, activate B cells, remember? So this can lead to shock in your body. Shock can cause serious damage to your organs and your tissues very quickly. Toxic shock syndrome. I know all the ladies in here have heard about it because you can't buy tampons without having to read like a panty. You don't have to read it, but get a pamphlet about toxic shock syndrome. You've probably read at least one of them. It tells you, you can't leave in your tampons for too long because you'll be at risk for this. Because the bacteria that could potentially be there could proliferate and lead to this. Right? And these are toxins. We're not waiting for overgrowth of bacteria. We're just waiting for presence of toxins. I've already said how if you have toxins from sound or from staff in your food, you can get sick within thirty minutes, right? If you get these bacteria that produce these toxins on your tampons, um, because you left it in for too long or because you bought some that your friend, I don't know, made that were organic or something, you left them in. I don't know. Um, anyways, those bacteria start making the toxin and your body starts going into shock. You might not feel good at first, but once you're in shock, you're not gonna be able to do shit about it. You will not be able to do anything because you're probably be on the floor unconscious. You will hope that somebody's there to save you. Within one to two hours, you can die from toxic shock syndrome. It is no joke, guys. So we don't see it very much, right? That's why we're not that worried about it. Have you ever met anybody that actually had toxic shock syndrome? Um, if you catch it and you know the symptoms early enough and you are a smart person to go get treated, you can survive it just fine. But if you wait until you're unconscious, you're not doing that, right? Anyways, um, it's super, super rare, even in the world in general anymore, because we irradiate tampons now. They just don't have the bacteria. Even if you left them in for days, probably you wouldn't get it. So, yeah, it's probably not gonna happen, but we all know what it is. And that's why you get the warning, because it's fricking serious. It's no joke. Our antigen presenting cells, remember macrophages, B cells, dendritic cells, the ones that can eat things up, break it down and pop it on their surface and say, who can react to this on our MHC two? They also themselves have MHC one because they have to, they can get viruses too, right? So all of them have that, but. So all of them have that, but so it just kind of depends on how we're interacting with our antigen. Where did we get it from? Did you get it from outside of the cell or did you get it from inside of the cell, right? We already said that MHC one. Is where, what you will put the stuff from inside the cells on, right? And everybody can do that. You pick up crap from the viruses that are multiplying in your body. You're like, oh God, oh God, oh God, oh God. Okay, put this on the MHC one. Okay, we've got this. And they're just like, please, please come and react to me. That's basically what's going on with the MHC one. Shit's going down inside of myself. What? Come help immediately, right? If you had it from outside of the cell, which was our original story, what happens is MHC two. And so the T cell. Helper, remember our helpers are CD four, right? They have CD four markers. The CD four helpers are naive. They come along and they see MHC two. With stuff from outside and they will proliferate and turn into TH two. So, okay. TH two, because it was presented on MHC two. It is that straightforward. At least that's easy. So that CD four helper cell, just imagine that Mark is wearing around a badge that says CD four. Because he's going to be captain and that's special captain code, right? So CD four, and now we've seen MHC two with our fidget spinner. And so we're going to become T helper two, right? Imagine that other poor soul that was infected with the virus. And they've got that part of the virus and then they're just sitting there, please help me, please come, somebody come help me, whatever, right? Uh, if we see that, MHC one with it, T helper one, TH one. Okay, so not too hard. Depends on what you're seeing that you'll differentiate into. Did it come from outside or inside? If it came from outside, it's on MHC two. If it came from inside, it came on one. Right? And that's what's going to determine what you're going to do next. We already know, no matter what, once you're activated, you're going to make a memory. We know, we know that no matter what, when you share activity, you're going to make a, whatever that's called, regulator. And then depending on your MHC two or MHC one signal. You'll be favoring one or the other. So the two for the MHC two. If you got one signal, then you're going to favor the MHC one response and TH one helper. Alright, so there's stuff that you're going to do after this. Don't worry about what's going on or you're just complicated over there. Okay, so you are an antigen presenting cell of some kind, or you're the person asking for help. Help me, I've got this horrible thing going on. And on the MHC one, you are presenting your antigen pull from inside of yourself. To a T cell. You can interact with a CD eight cell, your nasty killer cell. Right? The tank, the guy that's been waiting to fight, right? But he ain't going anywhere without the captain. So that's TH one. Okay, TH one is the captain that tells the CD eight cell that we can go. And then they'll proliferate and do their memory thing and their regulator thing and their effector cells, their active cells, they're killing the tank itself. This is over here, our cytotoxic T cell. They crank out these things called perforans and grandsimes. And they kind of do what they sound like they're going to do, okay? So you come over, help, help, oh my MHC one, I'm holding out my fidget spinner. What do we do? The tank has been fully activated and is going out to your area. And he's like, yeah, yeah, I see that buddy. I see that. I see that. I got you. Pokes holes all in you and shoves you full of enzyme to break down your contents to kill you. That's what's going to go on with the T cell there, the cytotoxic one. That's what they do. They go to your cells, poke holes in them, shove enzyme in it to start the killing process. And at some point that cell is going to know what's going on and it will just be like, yeah, okay, I'm done. I'm out. And it just dies. And that process is called apoptosis. Cool, terrifying, awesome, all of it. Alright, next we, this is just a list of everybody and what they're doing and all that stuff. Alright, uh, here now, we've got our little B cell and our B cell is waiting out in its little old. What was I saying? Lymph node. Yeah, it's just hanging out. And here comes the fidget spinner and it grabs on. Grabs the fidget spinner coming through, filtering through your little lymph node. And it grabs it and it puts it on its MHC two because it got it from the outside and it's an antigen presenting cell. And it's like, uh, got this. I need help. Come activate, come activate, come activate. Depending on Captain Mark to come around and activate me again. Works just like the other one. Yeah, the B cell can't do crap without the captain telling it what to do. The tank, our T cell, our side hawks of T cell couldn't do crap without the help of TH one. In this case, B cell can't do crap without the help of TH two. And this makes sense, right? Because you want TH one associated with stuff that came in from inside. So you want to kill the cells that are infected with the stuff that's inside. However, you found crap from outside, you need to take, take care of the outside stuff with outside battle, right? So basically what you're going to do is. And create antibody. Well, that's easy enough. So you need TH two to help activate and stimulate that whole process. Cool, TH two relates to MHC two, stuff from the outside. We're going to do antibody. TH one, stuff from the inside, going to activate with TH one and that's going to be the cytotoxic T cells. I know it's a lot, but this is, this is the time I have, okay? So I hope this is making at least a little bit of sense. We get our signals saying it's ready to go. We activate our B cell. The B cell's been activated by the TH two. Captain Mark's work is done here. Now our B cell is going to be making its stupid regulatory stuff and its stupid memory stuff, whatever. And it's plasma cells. Plasma cells are going to crank out some antibody. It looks like a snowflake. We just showed that it fricking looked like a Y. Well, that's great. So that's going to have to make sense later, right? Anyways, next, moving on to our cell, what's this going to talk about? T cells. Remember cell mediated immunity is talking about your T cells. This is literally just talking about what we just said though. And how the THs are going to operate to the MHC one response versus the MHC two response. Being literally respectively, TH one directing it versus TH two helping direct it. And all sorts of other crap that comes in that you don't need to worry about. Regulatory, nobody cares. Say, B cell cytokines, they can receive signals. The CD eight cytotoxic cells, we know grandsimes, we know perforance, those kind of speak for themselves. Prefer and perforate, hold. grandsimes enzyme, going to enzyme its way through things and digest stuff, right? That's the idea with that. It's going to be related to your MHC one, therefore TH one helpers. So that's all this is doing. Those cells, remember, they don't just do virally infected cells, which is always my example. They can deal with cancer cells. And I hate to break it to you, this is also like I mentioned earlier, how you're going to reject your organs. Because what happens is if I am like, oh, help me, help me, help me. I, this is what I found. Come and deal. And then my, you know, tank comes and kills me, right? Appropriately. All that's normal. Now I take your kidney and I put it into my body. And your MHC that would be displaying, you know, antigen if it had any. It's just always there. It's just chilling though. And it's still MHC and it can still do its MHC stuff because it's just MHC. My body sees that MHC that's chilling as an MHC that's holding bad guy stuff. Because it's not shaped the right way. You had different genes and it got rearranged differently and whatever it is. So it sees that as bad guy stuff and then that's why it goes to work. It's not holding anything else. It's literally the MHC that it is attacking. So when I tell you I worked in the HLA lab, the HLA, AKA MHC. MHC one was the only thing we tested for anybody ever getting an organ ever. Just that, because it's so specific, that interaction. It's that important. I don't remember much else about it, so. I hated it. I mean, that's the most stressful job I've had in my entire life. So. Our little top part, our variable region area, we're interacting with this stuff again on our antibody, FAB. That's where like the antibodies doing this antibody specific stuff, FAB, AB, antibody, okay? And it's ABC and this is easy, that constant region, we call FC. FC is constant region. Doesn't get easy, easier than that, right? So those are terms that we use to refer to the actual structure of these guys. Now I don't know why, but I have to teach you that. So all your variability is in your FAB variable region, FC, constant region, not variability there. And it dictates what your antibody is going to do. What does it do again? We still haven't gotten to it. This is your antibodies and what they do. Number one, let's go through it, y'all. It does stuff for you. It doesn't just sit there and you get talked about. Okay, so first, we're going to coat the surface. This is one thing you can do, coat. Just cover the whole surface of the bacteria, like if I've covered you with a big old bubble and you can't move around. That's really basically what it does. I can't do your stuff if you're covered with antibody. Number two, the big daddy. This is opsonization and I'll write it up here where you can actually see the word. I'm sure you can look it up and all that, but I'm going to write it anyway. This is just helping. With phagocytosis. We mentioned this in the last one, right? We said complement could help with phagocytosis. Yeah, the term for this, no matter who you're looking at it with, is called optimization. Your bacteria floating along, living with your little capsule covering you. You think you're safe. They can't eat me. They can't get a hold of me. Antibody comes along or a complement comes along and they create a handle for your phagocyte to grab onto, almost like literally. So it can eat you up easier. Screwed now, buddy. Screwed now. So that's opsonization, just helping phagocytosis. With a helping hand, right? And the next one, number three, not as complicated as we thought it was, that word though, right? Alright, number three, this is neutralization. Neutralizing. Here, the antibody is binding directly onto the virus spikes. So that the spikes can't work as keys to get into the cell locks that it usually uses. The blocking the spikes. I'll, I'll write that here for you. Both kind of, it's walking by binding. Good question. Alright, the next one, number four is going to be a glute nation. If you've ever heard of this with. Like blood cells. It just means we're causing them to stick together. So I bind to this guy and I bind to this guy. And the other guy is doing it too. And we're all here and we're creating this like big old lump, if you will, stuff bound together. And then number five, we have complement. We already mentioned this one. Y'all probably just don't remember it because we're thinking of it in a different context. Compliment is how we abbreviate it in immunology. A compliment can be activated, activated by antibodies. That's the classical pathway. Remember there was three pathways, classical, alternative and lectin. So this is the classical. Antibody comes along, it activates the complement pathway. We poke holes in the enemy now and starts leaking its contents. That's called cytolysis. Cytolysis, cell breaking open. Alright, and then this last one, number six is anti-toxin, which kind of speaks for itself. We kind of already talked about haptins. This is basically what happens after you have antibodies against them. They just bind against the toxins. Anti-toxin. Alright, great. Good, good. Alright, so here's the different kinds of antibodies we can have. I told you that that FC region dictates what it can do and how it does it and all of that. Well, you have different kinds of antibodies you can make for certain locations and occasions, basically. Good, good thing you don't have to learn about how that besides that. But let's start with IgM. IgM is the very first antibody that you make. Now, our bombers, our B cells are the ones that are dropping the antibody bombs, okay? This is like you have a whole bunch of shitty bombs there and you have to use them before you get to the really nice ones, really big ones, okay? So this is IgM. It is, it's big. It's a pentamer. This is this one here. It's a pentamer where the Ys are all stuck to each other by their butt space with their FC regions. They look like a snowflake now, just five of them stuck together. That helps with them reaching around and grabbing stuff as much as they can. But it's hard for them to perform some of the functions they have to do because they're all stuck with their butts together. But it's what you make first because it's quick, it's dirty, it's easy. Crank it out, right? You make it first because it's the easiest to make. In your antibody response, once everything gets going, six percent. Now first, it's going to be a hundred percent IgM, but once everything's going and working, six percent will be IgM because it ain't important. Okay, what is important? What does the big work? Well, y'all. This one, this monomer over here, IgG. So IgG, once you get that sucker going, eighty percent of your antibody will be IgG. Because this does it all. This is the big daddy. This is the nasty bomb, alright? You've been waiting for this and this is what your whole body is waiting for when it's fighting infection. Once you get IgG, it's fun. Or good. And so basically what you can do is, as you're making IgM, I'm just trying to get together while you're trying to get more IgG going. Because it takes a little while. You, you know, you're in a, you have your IgM and that's all going. Once IgG comes along, you create memory cells that can make IgG. So that when I bring the girl with a guy, it doesn't matter really, with the measles through here. And you react so quick to it with your memory, that's IgG. That ain't no IgM that's protecting you. It's IgG. The good stuff, guys. Alright, we also have IG. Let's go to this one here. This is just your receptor on the outside of your B cell, IgD. It's just, it looks like the other one, so we put it in a list. It's just only on the surface. Everybody else gets secreted, just like they look. Alright, IG E, this is associated with, we usually say allergies. But it's normally associated with like worm infections, okay? And then IgA, this is just associated with your mucosa. It has a special structure. It's a dimer. Like hang out like this, which works well in mucous membrane areas. They call it the secretory. Because it's being secreted and I don't like anything about that. That sounds gross and so does mucous membranes. But yeah, these are fighters. These are our bombs. Different bombs you can have. We learned a little bit about tighter. We didn't call it tighter, but we learned about concentrations of antibody. In lab, talking about Eliza, right? We can use the, measure the actual like. Measure the. Color, the darkness of the color based on using a machine to see how dark it is to quantify the antibody concentration versus light color. So we know if you see something and you're just initially reacting to it, that's going to be taking time to activate everything. You can't, you have no antibody in the beginning, right? So that's your latent period where you have no antibody. But however, once you've seen this and reacted to it and recovered, you have IgG. And you just don't even act like you've even seen it, right? So that's your secondary response, your amnesiatic response. That's the goal with your, your vaccines. This is a chart that shows the amount of antibodies of each kind after you do that. There's different kinds of immunity that you can have. I'm going to just click some of this and I'm going to draw a chart instead. That's going to get into vaccines, but before we get into vaccines, I'm going to draw the chart, okay? You have active immunity. Or you have passive. Active means you're making your own antibodies. Passive means you're being given. Antibodies. Okay, and there's different ways you can be exposed to these. It could be naturally. Or artificially. Here's a little table we're going to draw based on that. I'm going to put these in a perspective for you. Natural and active. I got the chickenpox, I recovered from it and now I have antibodies against it. Naturally exposed to the thing and generated my own antibodies as a result. That is here, like chickenpox. Alright, let's, let's stay with. Yeah, active, artificial. Let's just move over to the right. Active, artificial. You are going to have to make your own antibody. um, to something that you were artificially exposed to. I can't imagine what that would be. Vaccines, right? So anything you're exposed to from the medical industry, pretty much here. So this will be your vaccines. You didn't encounter that naturally. You forced it, right? That's okay, but that is active, artificial. Alright, let's go down to passive. Passive, natural. You're getting antibody naturally from something else, somebody else. How would that work? Breastfeeding. The mother has antibodies in her breast milk and it gets passed on to her baby through breastfeeding, okay? I'm gonna put beef feeding because I don't want to put breast on here. It seems uncomfortable. Okay, um, then we have the passive, artificial. And here you can get antibody from somewhere else pumped into your veins as immune globulin. If you, uh, you know, you have to have some sort of antibody introduced to your body that can help block your receptors to inflammation causing cytokines, for example, that is humira. You can get infusions from things like humira or, um, remicade or whatever else, just like that, but we pump you full of antibodies. Those antibodies can stay in your body for two to three months. Pretty impressive, right? So this is like antibody infusions or immune globulin infusions. Immune globulin is just a fancier word for antibody. Cool, alright, four vaccines. We have live attenuated, um, which just means it is alive, but technically has lacks the ability to be bad guy stuff anymore. We have whole killed or inactive for viruses because they can't back, they're not alive. Um, literally just putting the dead things into you and making you react to that. Or we have a rando virus shell enclosing genetics that code for proteins for like COVID, let's say. Okay, that's the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Alright, so there's pictures talking about what I just said. Alright, uh, other ones that have to do with not the cell that itself, microbial surface structures um, that you can introduce like just the antigen itself, like toxoid vaccines. Um, or even, um, stuff from like the surface molecules themselves, depends. And then we have, uh, DNA, mRNA, whatever gene encoding thing, enclosed in a little vesicle. Lipids on the outside just to protect it. And we inject that and your cells make the product, the protein, you know, and then you react to that because it's foreign. And then you make antibodies to that so that whenever you see the real virus, you've already seen its coding before, expressed by your cells. Because we put mRNA from COVID into your muscle. Your muscle expresses it and puts it on its surface. You react to that and you're protected. This is Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. And if I haven't told you before, the reason I love immunology and I'm so excited about it and all this so much is that I took immunology with this man named Drew Weisman, who just got the Nobel Prize for making this vaccine. So I have quite the extensive background of immunology. That's why I like it so much and I get so excited about it. Just so you know, it's not all hot air. I'm blowing up y'all's rear. Alright. Cool stuff, uh, booster shots, just to keep those memory cells alive because cells die, right? If they don't have any reason to keep proliferating and making new versions of themselves, they won't. So we reintroduce it every now and then to make sure that we keep memory cells around. Uh, we've already talked about the COVID vaccines. Other ways that you can approach making a vaccine, other than what we just said with the viruses and the parts. Nanoparticles can mimic the shape of your fidget spinner, basically. So we don't have to deal with animal testing or anything, getting antibodies from humans, nothing like that. Um, and then we have, uh, CRISPR, using that to design our own antibodies within B cells and have them just crank out whatever it is we want. So that's useful too. Um, you can deliver vaccines subcutaneously, a shot up under the skin. If you go deeper, you're gonna get into the muscle. That's intramuscular shots. Some of them have to be one or the other. You get a better response. Um, then we have intradermal vaccines. You don't see a whole lot of those. Anybody in here in the military ever? No? Yes? Did you get the smallpox vaccine? Yeah, everybody in the military gets the smallpox vaccine. Have you gotten it, Mark? You did too? I hate to call out your age, buddy. They don't do it anymore. They don't do smallpox vaccines in the United States anymore, except to military. What they do is they call excoriation. They put these needles on your arm. Yeah, and it causes, it's pretty painful, but you get this nice stab and it's supposed to scar. If it scars, it took, they call it good. If it didn't, you have to do it again. But, um, that's intradermal, it's right on the skin. We don't get it in the United States anymore, but Russia, everybody in Russia does. Just saying. They have a concern about bioterrorism, I guess a little bit more in Russia than we are. Um, right, oral vaccines, we know you can sometimes get them in your nose or in your mouth and stuff like that. Adjuvants or anything added to the vaccine to help, uh, that whole APC antigen presenting um, with the B cell or T cell. It helps that response and it helps just stimulate the overall response. Okay, anything you add to help with that is called an adjuvant. You can get side effects, duh. You can have reactions to the injection itself, just because you put stuff in. You can have flu-like symptoms after getting a vaccine, common because most of your symptoms in any illness are caused by your immune system and that inflammatory response, not the thing. So if you're getting a shot to get a vaccine and you're having an immune response reacting to the shot because you're building up your IgG to protect you, you're having a immune, immune response. You might have flu-like symptoms, right? The most important, uh, risk would be that anaphylaxis. If you're allergic to something in the vaccine, it can, it can kill you. Uh, misinformation about vaccines. Everybody loves it, um. You can't get flu from the flu vaccine. If you're getting the shot especially, um, you're getting the dead version. Definitely not, but like we said, it's probably people just thinking that because they're having flu-like symptoms and that's just your normal immune response, yeah? Um, misconception, number two that's on here, mercury in the measles vaccine can cause autism. Measles vaccine never had mercury in it, ever. And also it, um, has been shown beyond a doubt that it is not causing autism and there's not actually even a correlation with it. So why were people talking about, why were they saying there was, there was this paper published by this scientist saying all these things? Yeah, he's already admitted that he falsified his data and was forced to redact everything that he did. This is true. People ignore that part, though. Yeah, yeah. And they wanted to all make big bucks off of pharma and it just just basically destroyed. That's why we have anti-vax, yeah? I mean, it really is, so unfortunate. But anyways, that's it for chapter sixteen. Um, these are post-chapter eleven, twelve and fifteen questions. If you're interested, this is what, um, you will take a picture of. I'm actually gonna go over these questions while you guys are taking your pictures, so you can, you know, remember about some of this stuff. Give one example of a physical method of microbial control that does not sterilize. I am going to go with boiling water. Okay, we'll get to why, the number four. Uh, give one antibiotic that works by affecting protein production. Um, tetra cyclin, I guess, or any of the mycins, a lot of mycins, not all of them, right? Like struck mycins, something. Those do. Uh, what is the classical pathway of complement cascade triggered by? We just talked about that. That's antibody. And four, back to number one, why does boiling not sterilize? Because it doesn't kill endophores. It only affects vegetative, which are, you know, active, free-living, um, metabolically active cells. And for the, the millionth time, but just to remind you all, endophores are dormant, completely dormant, okay? That means doing nothing. That's that, that's the answers. These are also available, oh, this is a little different than I said, but these are available also in your, um, slides.